Okay, please stand for our invocation led by Associate Pastor Alexandra Hudson, Government Street Presbyterian Church, and remain standing for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Holy and loving God, we are humbled by the ways that you call us to serve this city. I thank you for the ways that you have called each of these leaders, for the gifts and skills you have given them, and I pray for your wisdom to rest on each one. As the council moves through the business before them today, may they be uplifted by the prayers of the citizens of Mobile who know they have a difficult job, especially in these trying days when tension, divisions, pandemic, and storms plague us. Bless them with a spirit of compassion, justice, perseverance, and grace as they carry this high calling of public service. Bless our city ward. Let us all come together to be communities in which all people are healthy and safe, where all people have meaningful work, where all people can thrive. Bind us together with your love that is stronger than anything that divides us. With humble hearts we pray, amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. President.
Mr. Richardson.
I just got a message of Dr. Martha Williams, past Honorable Minister, and we have to sign a prayer for her. She's a founding pastor of the Greater Vision of Faith Church on Bayshore Avenue. She started, as I called it, a priest. She was a woman. She had to preach out of her home, and she stayed with it until her congregation moved to 461 Bayshore Avenue, a big, beautiful building over there. She finally retired. Her son Tim is now pastoring over there, but they're going to have her funeral service on Saturday at 11 o'clock, but she passed away, and I would like for us to have a moment of silent prayer.
And then you also wanted to have a moment of silent prayer for Mr. Shepherd, Councilman Richardson, I wanted to.
Yes, yes, Brother Marion Shepherd, outstanding man, 51 years of service with the City of Mobile's Recreation Department. He was an Honorable Member of the Stonefield Baptist Church, and he eventually moved his membership to the True God Baptist Church. He's married to Madge Shepherd, a great family, great, and he passed away a week or so ago. They've already funeralized him. We missed the opportunity last week to have a silent prayer for him, but let's add him to the list this morning, Brother Marion Shepherd.
Yes, sir. Let us observe those moments of silence.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Roll call. President Manzi.
Here.
Vice President Small.
Here.
Councilmember Richardson.
Here.
Councilmember Williams.
Here.
Councilmember Dave.
Here.
Councilmember Rich.
Here.
Councilmember Gregory.
Here.
Statement of rules.
Good morning.
Good morning.
In response to national, state, and local guidance due to the COVID-19 pandemic and in accordance with the Alabama Open Meetings Act and the Governor's Supplemental Emergency Proclamation, we are meeting remotely. While we are all in different places, we are able to participate as if we were all in the council chambers at City Hall, and in keeping with the requirements of the Alabama Open Meetings Act, the public is still able to observe the meeting through the live stream. All items we will address during this meeting are either necessary to respond to COVID-19 or necessary to perform essential minimum functions of the city. The public is still able to present comments to the council by emailing them to City Clerk at cityofmobile.org up to 30 minutes prior to the meeting. Public comments, which will be acknowledged as received during the meeting and distributed to council members and included in meeting minutes. As always, the meeting is live streamed. It can be viewed through the city's webpage or on the council's Facebook page. Those are the meetings, those are the rules for this particular meeting, and we thank you for your continued interest in your municipal government.
Approval of minutes of October 13th corrected November 10th and 16th.
Some move.
Okay.
Then probably move to the second in the discussion. If not, all in favor?
Uh huh.
Aye.
Opposed? Minutes off.
Mr. President, we have Dr. Ischel with us today to give us an update on COVID-19.
Good morning, Dr. Ischel. We're certainly glad to have you here with us.
Thank you so much, Councilman Manzi. With me is Dr. Laura Sapeda, who's the Chief Medical Officer for the Mobile County Health Department and has had the privilege of addressing the group in the past. COVID-19 continues to be active in our community. At this point in time, we've had an increase in transmission from over the past 14 days, from the previous 14 days of 61%, and over the last seven days, a 45% increase in community transmission. Hospital occupancy is up 12.3% over the past 14 days compared to the previous 14 days. Vaccine, good news is vaccine is on the horizon and will probably be shipped sometime before the first part of this year. First order of individuals to be vaccinated will be persons on the front line who work in the hospitals and care for people with COVID-19. Second line or second tier will be long-term care facilities and people at high risk. We will then have plans to go to the general population, probably early part of the spring, but it is very, very good news and that the vaccines are effective. That's the most important component. This is brand-new technology, never been done before in the history of the world by using RNA messenger ribonucleic acid to then send the message to the inside the human body for the DNA of humans to create antibodies to the COVID-19 virus. So exciting and happy, you know, times ahead, but unfortunately, we still have the reality of COVID-19 that we're working very hard to contain, and the Mobile County Health Department would like to thank the city council, the citizens of Mobile County for their special efforts that they're making by wearing masks and trying to help limit the spread of this disease. We have sent to Ms. Lambert a copy of the CDC's COVID-19. This has recently been sent out, and it says holiday celebrations and small gatherings and guidance and recommendations that the CDC is producing. So Ms. Lambert will get it to every member of the city council, and it talks about your own personal homes and how you're going to deal with the holiday season. It's still a challenge as we get in the holiday seasons. We're concerned as about small group transmission, and we really are starting a program at your health department in multiple locations, which is know before you go. So if you're going to go visit your grandmother, aunts, uncles, or people from out of town, or people are going to come visit you, we're having free COVID-19 testing at multiple sites. It's on our website. You do not need an appointment on Saturday to get the COVID-19 testing. So we're trying to encourage people. The transmission rate seems to be going from the younger populations to the ones that are highest, community transmission rates, but unfortunately, they're sharing it with the elderly members of their family, which have the highest mortality rate. Death rates are down, and I think that's directly attributable to the fact that we have not as many people in the hospital. When we were up over 200 patients admitted to local hospitals, we had many of the healthcare providers were ill, and it was really hard to provide for the patient care. We're less than 100 patients right now with COVID-19 in local hospitals, but that, as I just gave you numbers, is trending upward. Over the last 14 days, it's a 12.3% increase in the number of patients per day. Some come in, some go home. The mortality rate is staying low because we're able to provide high quality of care to the people who are infected. So questions that the city council might ask, we'll be glad to answer.
Any questions of Dr. Ischel, Mr. Vice President? Thank you, Mr. President. Good morning, Dr. Ischel, and thank you for, you know, coming aboard this morning and attended our meeting. We have a question for you actually, too. I do understand that you have for our city clerk, so recommendation for the holidays, Thanksgiving and Christmas. Many people, many citizens, you know, still not on our newsletter. Could you give us a general overview of the recommendation for the Christmas and Thanksgiving holidays? And though there is a hot button topic that's been, you know, floating around in the city for the last couple of days dealing with Mardi Gras, and what is your recommendation as far as, you know, Mardi Gras, or is it just too early to give your recommendation?
All right, well, let's, thank you very much, Mr. Small. First of all, the very simple kind of things, if people are sick, if you're not feeling well, don't go to a social gathering, whether it's your aunt's, you know, family reunion or whatever. So if you're not feeling well or have any symptoms of respiratory illness, you need to go ahead and self-isolate and not go share the illness with friends and family members. Next is try to wear masks as much as you can, even if you're at a social gathering of any sort, wear a face covering, and then six-foot social distancing whenever possible. And then the last component is frequently washing your hands. Those are the just basic core items that we would like everybody in the community to practice, and even at their, at their family gathering. The other is buffet lines, is preferably get one person to plate, you know, serve food to individuals, or if you're having the traditional Thanksgiving dinner, is give everybody utensil that they're going to eat with to get the food onto their personal plate. Putting down a buffet line with traditional, where everybody's grabbing the spoons and then putting the food product to their face is a high probability of transmission of COVID-19. So I'm standing in line, I chew, sneeze in my hand, and then go pick up the buffet line. That's not a very healthy way to serve the meal. So hand sanitizer, so people can then get a nice tablespoon, and my wife and I were talking about this, nice tablespoon, a fork, and go through the line and put, use your spoon, get off the buffet line what you want, or one person who's washed their hands thoroughly is serving with one spoon. Okay, here's some rice, here's some this, here's some that, and then give everybody the plate, and when they come back again, get a clean utensil, but don't be, you know, using the same utensil from one person to another in order to serve your plate. Not complicated. This is just a highly contagious virus that we just don't need to give it an opportunity to infect other people. So the question about Mardi Gras is that we really don't know. I mean, we've had parading organizations call us and say, what are the rules? What are the rules? Well, the virus is changing, and I can't tell you what, what the governor's order expires December the 11th. If the governor's next order is in some states says, you know, there's no, not going to be indoor dining of any, any form, then that's hard for us to sit down and say what's it going to be in two months or three months. So we really have to try to prevent, if people really want to have a wonderful, happy holiday season, which includes Mardi Gras, let's do the most we can to contain the transmission of the disease, so therefore our hospital capacity is not challenged. We don't have a lot of transmission in the community, and then we have, get to have more fun individually and as a city and county.
Okay, yeah, thank you so much. One other question, Dr. Ischel. Many citizens have some concerns about, you know, taking the vaccine, saying that they don't want to be a quote-unquote guinea pig. How, how much concern should a average citizen be concerned about being one of the first one taking this vaccine when it first roll out?
Well, I think that's a very legitimate question, Mr. Small. Is it concern of the vaccine is something we're all, all of us concerned about. When the FDA finally gets the, you know, approves the vaccine, I will feel fairly comfortable that they've done their due diligence, that there is not a hidden political agenda that we have to have it out by this date or else. So as it goes forward, we've seen two of the major manufacturers have questions about the vaccine. They stopped their clinical trial, and now they're continuing to go forward. So I've taken many vaccines, being a naval officer and enlisted in the United States Navy. I took shots all the time, and I will take this vaccine when it's available, and when the FDA approves it, just like the FDA approves penicillin, FDA approves antibodies, FDA approves many, many pharmacological products, and I would, would not hesitate to take it. And the more we get people vaccinated, we have to get about 65 or 70% of the population vaccinated. So we're going to need a lot of community participation, and we'd love to be able to come down to City Hall and at city council meeting, we'll give injections to everybody online. So, so we hope that everybody on this call will plan to participate in the vaccination process.
One other question, Mr. President, being on mine, and I understand that the health department's giving out the free COVID test. I guess you said starting Saturday or upcoming week, upcoming days, excuse me. There's going to be like a one or two delay of time when the individual, individual will get the test results back, or is it the same day?
It's the same day. So we have appointments available right now, 690-8889, to get an appointment, to get a free COVID-19 test, and then on Saturday, we're going to have it, have walk-in availability and appointments to get the point-of-care testing, which is an antigen test. If the antigen test is positive, then we need to do the PCR test, which is the nasal swab test, which is the molecular test, and it is considered the gold standard of do you have COVID-19 or don't have COVID-19. So we're excited about providing this to, to the community and hope many people will participate, especially those who are going to visit their elderly family members they haven't seen in a long period of time, because asymptomatic transmission, which caused a lot of concern, we didn't know that when this first started in February, that wearing a mask, so that's why the first wave, we did not say wear a mask was important because we didn't know about asymptomatic transmission, and that's something we've learned. This is a brand-new disease. We don't have all the answers. Another question on vaccine, how long is it going to last? We don't know. So if you get vaccinated, will you have to take another vaccine in a year, or will it be good for 10 years like tetanus, or will it be good for a lifetime? Or is it going to be like your puppy dog, good for two years? Because rabies, we have to vaccinate our dogs and cats on a fairly regular basis in order to maintain control of that highly, you know, infectious disease in our four-legged family members population.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Small. Mr. Dave.
Dr. Ischel, thank you for being with us today. Some breaking news is that New Orleans has canceled all Mardi Gras parades for this coming year, and in the light of that, do you think that Mobile County ought to follow suit?
I think it's very important that Mobile County follow, communicate effectively with the leaders of New Orleans, and that's something I'm sure our community is going to consider. That's a decision. They have more experience about COVID-19 and Mardi Gras than any other city in the world, and if their city leaders have made that decision, I think it's something we need to, to have a discussion about and, and learn from the experiences of others. Does one shoe fit all? No. What they do in New Orleans have here, I can't tell you exactly how they made that decision, but I think it'll be interesting to get information from them and see what, what were the parameters that led them to make that decision, but it's something we should look at closely as we move forward.
As the, as the public health officer from Mobile County, will you be talking to public health officials in New Orleans?
I already have talked to public health officials in New Orleans and along with multiple deans of schools of public health, and everybody has concern about community transmission of COVID-19. So to answer your question, yes, I have personally been in calls with three deans of schools of public health and at least 10 MDs who are infectious disease specialists in various cities and other people who are in public health departments in different jurisdictions.
Well, I was, what I really meant, I maybe should have phrased the question differently, but, but now that New Orleans has acted to ban the parades, are you going to be in contact with public health officials over there to, to ascertain why they took that step and whether it's comparable to our situation here?
Absolutely. We will communicate with our colleagues in Louisiana as we've done in the past. So look forward to that, that, that conversation, and, and again, we have to be, this is something we, we, I didn't know that until this meeting, that they had canceled. So today was the first I've heard of that, they had canceled the parades. So I think there are three components that they, they talk about in New Orleans. There's their parades, there are the social gatherings, the balls, and then there's Mardi Gras Day itself, and what activity goes on in that particular day. So we need to get more information, and we look forward to having that communication probably in the next day or two.
Yeah. The reason I asked those questions, or the last question, is because my recollection is that prior to the city council adopting the mandatory face mask ordinance, we had extended discussion with you and the medical society and acted on the basis of recommendations that we take that action. And I, so I think, I think the, a, a clear and concise recommendation from you as the public health officer and really from the medical society would be valuable as we, as we and the mayor approach that decision.
We look forward to that opportunity. Jennifer, who's the health officer of, in New Orleans, is a friend and a colleague, and I look forward to having a conversation. Dr. Sapeda and I'll probably do that, like I say, in the next couple of days and get more information, and we want to be a resource to you and the mayor's office as these hard decisions have to be made. So look forward to the opportunity.
Thank you, Dr. Ischel.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you very much, Dr. Ischel. Thanks for joining us today. I know that the mayor sent his information to the Mardi Gras societies and mentioned that the city attorney had said it was okay to have nine on a float, but there was really no conversation about the communities that come out to attend those parades. Do you have any thoughts on that, and did the mayor's office reach out to any healthcare providers or your office prior to sending that directive to the societies, to your knowledge?
We, we're on the unified command with the mayor and with Monsieur Ludgood, so we have conversations on a regular basis. Exactly the nine people on a float or however, the guidelines, I assume, are coming from the six-foot spacing, and I can't tell you how big a Mardi Gras float is, but I would assume that that is the objective information that has been in the governor's standing order. But the, the interesting thing is at this point in time, that may be what the rules are, but what are the rules could be December the 12th, whether they're going to be January, whether they're going to be in February, and I don't know. So it's hard to make a plan. I would say about crowd gathering is we do not support large gathering of crowds, just like at the football stadiums, just as NASCAR has demonstrated. The distancing is extremely important component, and the last time I was downtown, there was not a lot of social distancing. And then the next question is, if you allow that to go forward, who is going to be responsible to maintaining the six-foot separation between individuals and make sure that they're wearing a mask? That's, that in itself is a significant challenge to make, help people make good decisions.
I know that the ultimate goal is not to do a major lockdown, and as much as we love Mardi Gras and we love Christmas celebrations, Hanukkah, whatever, and of course, big Thanksgiving crowds, just for this year, if, if we can contain ourselves and not overextend those types of invitations, I, I really think that's the goal. You mentioned a 12% increase in hospitalizations. At the rate we're going, is there any way to project if we were to, you know, continue big events or have things where people are in close contact? Is there any formula that you look at to project? Because the whole idea of preventing a lockdown, like, when do you, when, is it too late to wait till that happens and then you have no choice? Is, is that pretty much why you're trying to tell the community to observe these kind of controls, so to speak, that a lot of it is self-responsibility?
Yes, we, we really think it's a personal responsibility, and, and people need to help. We need, in public health, to help people make good decisions or better decisions for themselves and their families. There is not a magic number that I can tell you when we have X number of patients in the hospital, but the number, if they're going up at 12%, and that's over a two-week period of time, we know that over 200 in the hospital was a critical time for the Mobile hospitals as far as intensive care units and beds and capacity. The most critical component for providing high-quality healthcare is the healthcare providers and nurses and team and staff. So if the hospitals are going over what they normally have, then there is a component of healthcare that the person has to be in the hospital, and people provide the best care they possibly can. But if you have to take care of six patients with COVID-19 instead of four patients with COVID-19, your attention to detail and your ability to provide services are better with a fewer number of patients that happen to be there. But when we stress the system, just like if you stress, overstressed concrete on a bridge, we're poised to have a bad outcome.
And I don't know if you know this, or if there's any information through your correspondence with other like-minded people and other people in, in your healthcare industry, does the city accept any liability if it approves and gives permits to groups and encourages this kind of activity? Is there, or is that just not something that's feasible?
Yeah, I, I, I really would have to yield to the legal profession. As a medical provider, the lawyers would probably be more learned in the law and be able to give legal advice. I just have no... I just have no firsthand knowledge or experience. And I'm sure there are more qualified individuals in that legal profession to answer that question.
I don't know if Chris wants to weigh in on that, but is there any kind of level of responsibility? Or can people track where they received the virus and got contacts with it? Does that work like that? Chris, are you hearing anything in your industry about that on the ground?
No, ma'am, I don't really have any, any particular info on that right at the moment.
Yeah.
One, okay. One of the things, one thing is interesting in certain social settings is, is requiring knowledge of who attended the event. So if we have special events, we're probably really going to have to have good information of who's there. So if there is an exposure, so we can do tracking in case of, of the, of the patients and who was exposed and have that knowledge. But that, that will help public health tremendously, even if it's a wedding and there are actually people having events with larger numbers. But we're going to try to get the information about New Orleans and how many people are gathered for social events and, and find out more information about their Mardi Gras. And I don't know if, again, that might be a question that Chris might want to ask since they had people, numerous people, you know, they didn't know that there was COVID out there. Now that you have knowledge that COVID is there and it's highly transmissible and the CDC is giving you guidance and recommendations and their governor's orders, then, then I think the lawyers have more information that they can give you an opinion on that.
Okay, well, thank you. And thank you so much. And any information, flyers or whatever we can get into our newsletters would be very good information for us to share with our readers and with the community. Thank you so much for joining us and, and giving us this information.
Our pleasure.
Absolutely.
Any question?
Any other questions?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
If you want a second opinion, you can ask Dr. Sipeta, she's sitting here.
Thank you, Dr. Sipeta. We appreciate all your hard work. Coming right to you, Mr. Richardson, Mr. Fred Richardson.
Okay. Dr. Ischel, we just appreciate, or appreciate so much you, Dr. Sipeta. I come in before us today. We always look forward to hearing from you. You always have a lot of valuable information to provide that are oriented to, to this council but to other citizens in, in the city of Mobile. And they are asking questions today. I posted on my Facebook page, they released the mail issued on Mardi Gras just so everybody will be aware of, of what's going on. And the vast majority of people who respond to that were opposed to Mardi Gras, opposed to us having Mardi Gras this year. I know Mardi Gras, it's mid-February, it's way down, it's a pretty good piece down the road. And I also know these Mardi Gras parading group need time to plan. And you've already been told that New Orleans has called off their Mardi Gras. I believe that whether we, the issue is whether or not it's going to be safe for our citizens to come to a Mardi Gras parade, that's, that's the issue. Health-wise, whether it be safe health-wise for our citizens to come out and enjoy the Mardi Gras. When, when, when the, when the Alabama legislature drew up the charter for the city of Mobile, they gave us public health. They didn't, I mean, public safety, they did not give us public health. They public health to the county, you, you, you all got. So we are going to be listening to you as to whether or not it's going to be safe for our citizens to come out and parade. And I, I know Mardi Gras is down the road. And I know that by February, we may have a grip on this virus, we may not have a grip. What I want to say today to you is we are going to be depending on you and your officials to make that decision. It's not a political decision. It's, it's a decision that you all ought to make. And we're going to, Joe, Joe went down that same road. I, I agree that we, you ought to be, you ought to be able to say in light of what I know, we know about this virus, it is not going to be safe for our citizens to go out for Mardi Gras. All based on our medical opinions, all what we see. Citizens ought to go out and then if you're going out, tell them what to do, put the mask. That's going to be up to you all. And so I'm going to be, I'm not, I'm not, I'm not going on my way up here to say I'm against Mardi Gras, I'm for Mardi Gras. I'm going on my way up here to say I will be listening for advice from the Mobile County Health Department officials to advise us what to tell you all. I'm not taking no, making no decision about that. Because that's a decision that should be left up not to politicians, but to health officials. And we'll be looking out for you. The, the last one I want to, last thing I want to say is the issue has already been raised regarding the upcoming vaccine, vaccine. And you, you, you related our good to us, who would get it first and who would get it last. People I represent want to know if I'm going to be vaccinated. That's, they, they, all that other stuff is, because if I'm not, they're not. So I'm going to go ahead and ask the question. Do you plan to be vaccinated, take the vaccine down?
Absolutely. I will plan to be vaccinated and I would encourage each and every member and public official, elected official to take the vaccine. And we need to lead by example. In regards to Mardi Gras, Dr. Koulianis, who is president of the County Medical Society, has suggested we have a medical committee formed that includes all of us. It's nice of you to say you will refer to the health department to make a decision. But this is a complex issue that we want to make the best decision and we want to have input as we're going. The safest way is the safest time in American aviation was the day after 9/11 because there weren't any planes flying. But that was not, if you wanted to have a safe day in, in as far as flying. So I think that we just need to work together to come up with what works in Mobile, Alabama. What works in New Orleans may not work here and the circumstances and conditions may be different. So we would, we look forward to providing input. We look forward to moving this process forward. But just remember, if you want to truly have safety, we do nothing and that's not a good option either.
I agree. And I thank you for saying you will take the vaccine.
President Nancy?
Yes, ma'am. Ms. Rich?
This might be the opportune time to read the letter in for the record, if I may, from Dr. Koulianis. Would that be okay?
I think this is an opportune time.
Okay, thank you. This is a letter from the Medical Society of Mobile County on their letterhead dated November 11th, 2020. And it's to the Honorable Sandy Stimson Mayor. And it, it goes, Dear Mayor Stimson, the Medical Society of Mobile County Board of Census and the Board of the Mobile County Health Department strongly urges you to form a carnival advisory council to assist the city and carnival societies in their safely planning of events this upcoming carnival season. The objective of the advisory council is to bring interested stakeholders, including carnival and parading societies, public health, private and academic medicine, public safety, and our government officials together to guide, to create guidance from an overall community health perspective using the best science, practices, and observation. National and regional guidelines and experience will be tailored to current reality as it relates to COVID pandemic in our county. The current vice president of the Mobile Medical Society Board, Dr. Donald Bedsole, will represent the Medical Society of Mobile County in this endeavor. I suggest Dr. Laura Sipeta represent the Mobile County Health Department and the CMOs of our area hospitals. Hospital capacity, infection rates, PPE supply, and essential worker availability will play a crucial role in adjusting regional and national recommendations. In addition, past and present recommendations and experience with our sister city in New Orleans, Louisiana, will also play a role. We have been honored to work closely with your office throughout this year. I truly believe the health of the citizens of Mobile has benefited from this collaboration. I look forward to hearing from your office and continuing our joint efforts for the citizens of our beloved community. And that's from George Koulianis, who is president, Anita Ford Johnson, MD, president-elect. Thank you.
What's the name of the board?
The board is the, the County Society of, the Mobile, the Medical Society of Mobile County.
Okay.
That was the letterhead.
And, and ma'am, Ms. the clerk, if you could make certain that that's attached to the minutes of this meeting, it would be appreciated.
Okay.
Uh, Dr. Ischel, I guess my question is after hearing that letter and going down some of the questions we, we've heard from council members, this, this committee or this council that they're wanting to put together with us not having the responsibility for health, is that not something that the health department under your auspices could put together and then provide to the city and any other city in Mobile County? Because we aren't the only community that has Mardi Gras celebrations. There are smaller disparage celebrations all across Mobile County. And so all of them probably will be seeking some guidance. So could, could that not come, come under your auspices? And then you all as a medical, medical body issue to the various governments in Mobile County, what you feel would be appropriate, appropriate recommendations as relates to Mardi Gras?
We could, and my suggestion would be in order to be more inclusive and to have the whole buy-in of the political community, y'all are, y'all represent your constituents, y'all are part of the due process, y'all are held in high esteem in each of the districts that y'all represent. So to have it be formed as a part of the community, not just the medical group telling people what to do, I think it would be a, a better vehicle to have more, more, the whole city. Because really, Mardi Gras is a city of mobile event. Majority of all the activities are permitted by the city of mobile. The buildings are owned by the city of mobile. The police department, the fire department, the paramedics are all city of mobile for 90% of Mardi Gras activities that occur in the county. If you count total number of people and participants, it's, it's predominantly. And I think we need to have a partnership as we move forward with making these decisions.
Any, any other questions of Dr. Ischel? Ms. Gregor? Oh, you were shaking your head, no, I'm sorry. Mr. Davis? Well, Dr. Ischel, again, we thank you for all of your valiant leadership over the last nine months. Not just the last nine months, several years that you've been our health officer. And we appreciate you coming on today and giving us this update. It's imperative that we continue to drive home the message that while there might be some COVID fatigue, COVID itself has not been fatigued at all. It's warning to attack any and everybody that it can. And so we need to be mindful of that. And as much as I love being with my family members across the state, we know we will be here in Mobile celebrating Thanksgiving and being thankful that this disease hasn't touched us personally. And again, thank you again, Dr. Ischel. Any, any parting comments you would like to offer?
No, I, I, yeah, thank you very much for the opportunity to be with you. We, the Mobile County Health Department, wish everyone health and happiness during the holiday season and give you strength to work with us in making the right decisions for our community as we go forward. The good news is we have vaccine and it appears to be very, very effective by two manufacturers. So if everybody can just keep your seatbelt on a little bit longer, we think that this, we have a planned re-entry. And it's been a long and hard process, but thank everybody for taking it seriously. When we really got serious about six or eight weeks ago, our numbers were way down and we're kind of creeping back up again. And I think we just need to reemphasize that the end is near. Please just keep up the, the, the fight.
Thank, thank, thank you so much. Mr. Richardson, did you have any, you had something else?
Yeah, I was going to say, could we give his guests a chance to say good morning to us?
Absolutely. Dr. Sipeta, if, if you, we would certainly love to hear from you. We appreciate all of your hard work and, and the other members of, of, of Dr. Ischel's valued staff and certainly would love to hear from you.
Well, he's a tough act to follow, but just good morning to everybody and thank you all for, for the hard work that you do for the city. So it's my honor to be here.
Thank you.
I, I have one other quick question to either Dr. Sipeta or to Dr. Ischel, if I may. And that has to do with the vaccine. Is there a plan in place for implementing the rollout of the vaccine besides the, the council rolling up their sleeves publicly?
Yes, there, there is a, there is a plan. ADPH has a, a plan that they've submitted to the CDC. All of the states were required to submit their, their plans and it's available online. But if anybody is interested, we can certainly send that to you electronically. But there are two hospitals in Mobile that will be among the first to receive the vaccine in the state. I think Dr. Ischel had mentioned that the first to receive the vaccine in general, not just locally, will be healthcare workers, first-line responders, and the, the highest risk, highest risk. And then after that, it will be more of a general population rollout. But it is a, a longer, a risk curve, including long-term care facility patients. So, so there is very much a plan nationally and locally. So that, that will all, once, once the emergency use authorization is in place, that will all start to happen very quickly. But in terms of, it, it will be kind of a cycle of it getting to the, to the general public. But certainly I can, can make that, that ADPH's plan available to anyone and everyone on the council. If that's something you're interested in.
Yes, thank you.
Okay, absolutely.
Thank, thank you, Dr. Sipeta, and thank you, Dr. Ischel. Any further questions?
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
I was notified by my pharmacist, which is CVS. They notified me that there are 10,000 CVS stores across this nation. And they have been selected to receive the vaccine. And it's, and, and, and they're going to dispense it free when they get it. So I know that, that will be a place that we can, can go and be vaccinated.
Yes, so CVS and Walgreens will be part of the, of the distribution plan. Not the very first shipment, but, but they are part of the, the plan. We know that at least the first dose of the vaccine and both of the vaccines that are in the phase three are at least a two-dose vaccine. There will be several others that we expect to be developed. There will be several others that we expect to be developed. Um, it's gonna get tricky because you have to stick with whichever one you get. And they have different, um, periods, like one you need to get three weeks after the other one, one you need to get four weeks. So it's gonna get kind of complicated pretty quickly. Um, but, but i- i- it's gonna move, and it's gonna move quickly too. Um, but those details will be forthcoming. And I'll be happy to send you all the information that we have so far, if, to anyone who wants it.
Yeah, what, what you were saying was that if you start off with the Pfizer product, you're gonna need to stay with the second shot with the Pfizer product. And that's a three-week interval. And if you get the other product, uh, that comes out, it's a four-week interval between the second shot. The third vaccine that comes out on the market maybe just be one injection. So we just don't know.
Yes, sir. Uh, Mr. Vice President?
Uh, yeah, I think my next question was, uh, Dr. Ischel, which one would you really recommend? If there's a choice that's given to, uh, the citizens or yourself? I mean, because I understand that one, the first vaccine that ca- that's coming out is almost like ninety percent effective. And the second one is saying that they're ninety-five percent effective. I mean, I mean, is, if you are, are you gonna support?
I'll, I'll, I'm, I'm, I'm gonna take the first one that comes out. So, uh, you know, is ideas, I'd, we need, we as community leaders can't sit down about the difference between, you know, if, uh, this one or that one. It's, I think, uh, I'm gonna take the first one that's available, uh, and they're both very, very effective. Normal vaccines, if they had a fifty percent effectiveness rate, uh, we would consider that to be, uh, a reasonable vaccine to put on the market. But the, up at ninety, ninety-four percent, uh, those are just incredibly effective vaccines. So, uh, that's, uh, that's, that's, that's not gonna be a factor for Burt Ischel, uh, in which one I take.
All right, thank you.
Yes, sir.
Again, thank you, uh, Dr. Ischel and Dr. Zapatas. Uh, appreciate all of y'all's hard work and, and stay at it.
All right. Thank y'all. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays to you all.
And stay safe.
Same to you and, and to Dr. Zapata. Madam City Clerk?
Um, we have proclamations, um, from Councilmember Rich. And, uh, I think Councilmember Dave is going to read the proclamation for Councilmember, uh, Gregory.
Ms. Rich?
Hey, thank you. This is a proclamation today, whereas the National Pressure Industry Advisory Panel, or the ANPIAP, is leading a Worldwide Pressure Injury Prevention Day, twenty twenty in the United States, which is to be celebrated on Thursday, November nineteenth, twenty twenty. And whereas the panel promotes awareness and public education of pressure injury prevention, as well as reinforces the relationship between national and local organizations and the NPiap. And whereas injuries such as pressure ulcers and bed sars are serious risks for people, especially the elderly, those who have limited mobility, and those who spend more of their time in bed or a chair. And whereas COVID nineteen presents new challenges for healthcare providers and institutions as resources are strained with growing number of patients. And now therefore, we, the members of the Mobile City Council, do hereby proclaim November nineteenth, twenty twenty, as Pressure Injury Awareness Day in Mobile, and urge all our citizens and healthcare organizations to work together in raising awareness of pressure injuries and commend them on these diligent efforts.
Thank you so much, Ms. Rich. Mr. Davis?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm reading this, uh, proclamation on behalf of, uh, Councilwoman Gregory. This, uh, proclamation has to do with pancreatic cancer. And I would just like to mention that both, uh, Ms. Rich and myself have brothers who suffered uh, and, uh, died as a result of pancreatic cancer. Whereas nearly fifty-eight thousand people will be diagnosed with pancreatic cancer. And forty-seven thousand fifty people will die from the disease this year alone. And whereas pancreatic cancer, which claims the lives of ninety-one percent of its patients within their first five years of being diagnosed, has the lowest five-year survival rate of all major cancers and is currently the third-leading cause of cancer-related death in the U.S. And whereas symptoms of pancreatic cancer generally don't present themselves until the disease advances to its latter stages, leaving only ten percent of patients receiving their diagnosis while the disease is confined to their pancreas. And whereas with awareness of its symptoms and risks, along with research on early detection, causes and effective treatments, we can turn the tide against this devastating disease. Now therefore, I Gina Gregory, Councilmember of District Five, along with the members of the Mobile City Council, do hereby proclaim November nineteenth, twenty twenty, as World Pancreatic Cancer Day in Mobile, and urge all our citizens to help us raise awareness of this deadly disease as we keep those who have been afflicted with it and their families in our thoughts and prayers, done at the City of Mobile, Alabama, this seventh day, seventeenth day of November, twenty twenty. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Davis.
Mr. President, and we have Doris, uh, Carter, um, is on here to receive that proclamation. Um, I don't think that she has audio, but, um, she is present to receive that.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Carter, for your attendance and for your, uh, advocacy on this very, uh, treacherous disease. I lost my grandfather to pancreatic cancer and, um, we just certainly hope and pray that through research and development, uh, that we'll continue to make headway as relation to this very painful disease.
Okay, adoption of the agenda.
M- M- Madam City Clerk?
The mayor?
It will have the mayor's, uh, portion yet.
Oh, I'm, oh, I'm sorry. We didn't, we did not. Communications from the mayor.
That's right. I'm sure he has much to communicate. Barry, i- i- you're up, Mr. Mayor.
You're, you're muted, Mr. Mayor.
Yeah, yeah.
Okay, how about now? Uh, been an interesting hour. Appreciate everyone's comments. Uh, give us a little, give you a little history, um, for the public that may be listening. You know, since, um, the COVID crisis began and we really got engaged in, uh, last March, I can't remember the exact date, but we stood up the Unified Command, which is the Mobile County Health Department and Mobile County. Uh, there are probably fifteen people that may be on a, that were on a phone call three times a week. Um, well, let's say twice a week with the Unified Command, then the incident commanders, the mayor, Commissioner Ludgins, Dr. Ischel, we would meet once a week on the phone. Uh, also during that period of time over the last several months, uh, Matt Anderson with my office would be on the phone, a phone call with the Medical Society and the CMOs at least every other week. And probably has talked to the leadership of the Medical Society every week and sometimes more frequently. So from a background standpoint, we have been in communication with, uh, the Health Department, trying to make decisions of which direction we needed to go. Knowing that Mardi Gras was coming up, we knew that we had to reach out and find out what the Mardi Gras organizations were doing. So about two months ago, we wrote a series of, uh, recommendations on having the, uh, Mardi Gras balls. And that was to follow the C, uh, the CDC guidelines as well as the governor's, um, safer-at-home order. Great care was taken to outline what could be done. ASM, which is now, which was formerly SMG, worked with all the Mardi Gras organizations to pare down the size of those, uh, ball, Mardi Gras balls to make sure it was in, they were in compliance with, uh, health guidelines. So that found us easing up to the point where the Mardi Gras organizations wanted to know about parading. So it was last week, uh, last Thursday, we spoke to probably fifteen Mardi Gras, uh, parading societies to get their input, but also to tell them how we saw the future, uh, having to do with Mardi Gras. And basically, uh, our underlying message and really, um, really wasn't underlying, but the whole conversation was to make sure that everybody understood that they were taking a risk as we planned Mardi Gras parades because you could have the changing circumstances, health-driven, that at any moment could, um, waylay those plans. So even with that, some of the Mardi Gras organizations wanted to go ahead with the plans. And so we agreed to have the permitting process, uh, to open it up and also talked about other issues that they raised, uh, having to do with cancellation if they had to do so for health reasons. So we feel like at this point in time that, um, that we had communicated with the parading organizations. But that Thursday evening, there were a couple of questions that, uh, warranted our clarification. Uh, uh, and it had to do with, you know, being able to counsel at the last minutes, which we gave them, uh, some ga- guidance on that. And also, um, having to do with any penalties, uh, that may be incurred. And we also told them that we would start the actual, uh, open the city for permitting of parades. Thought being that if we didn't start the process, then we wouldn't, you know, just go ahead and it kind of de facto, you would not have Mardi Gras. So as when those conversations occurred, the follow-up letter was to clarify the things that maybe were not clarified on Thursday evening. And that's the, uh, document that Mr. Richardson, uh, posted on his Facebook page. There were some, uh, things that if you didn't know what happened on Thursday evening, maybe some of the comments that were on that document didn't make sense to you. But anyway, so, uh, all of that is kind of past history. What we're dealing with now is that, uh, we've learned that New Orleans has canceled their parades. Um, my understanding is the Health Department actually works for the mayor there. And then so the, um, unlike the city of Mobile, that Councilman Richardson pointed out, Health Department is separate than the city of Mobile, but obviously the mayor, uh, the mayor-led Health Department made the decision because of the super spread of Mardi Gras last year that they were not going to have, uh, parades this year. The city of Mobile, our position is going to be, uh, that we will follow the guidelines that are put out by the Alabama Department of Public Health and the Mobile County Health Department. Um, we will continue our conversation, uh, twice weekly now with the Unified Command to make sure we stay in touch with them. Uh, nothing has changed as far as the ongoing conversation, the conversations we've been having, uh, with the CMOs and the Medical Society. I think Mr. Richardson's insight, uh, was, uh, very helpful in explaining that, you know, this is a public health issue. And we are looking for the Health Department to give us some guidance, as well as the comments made by, uh, Mr. Manzi. You know, where we stand today is that with the increased information, or with the increase in, um, hospitalizations and with the increase in infection rates and increase the number of people that have it across the nation, you know, we all know there, there cannot be anybody that does not know what you're supposed to do about COVID. I mean, for six to nine months, that's all we've been talking about, it seems. And so everybody knows your social distancing, it's a face mask. You know, it's, uh, don't go anywhere if you're sick and if there's washing your hands. And so really what it amounts to, if you know that you're having an increase in the cases, what you have to do is increase the frequency to make sure you wear the m- face mask. Make sure you do the social distancing. Nothing is going to change, you know, to slow the spread until there is the vaccine. And nobody knows exactly when that's going to be. So I, I think that you will see, uh, uh, increased frequency of us reminding people of that. But let's face it, everybody knows what they should do. And it will probably take a loved one getting sick or themself getting sick to realize, you know, that they need to do it. Uh, we're not just crying wolf about, about this disease. Um, Mr. Manzi, what was it that you said about, uh, COVID fatigue?
Well, I, I was, I was saying that I know that there are many who might be suffering from it, but that COVID hadn't gotten fatigued at all. It's strong.
I think, I think you're exactly right.
I like it.
I think that's a good, good comment. Um, and also, uh, I do look forward to what Dr. Ischel and the, uh, the Medical Society of Mobile, what they come up with, you know, as they analyze this and they share notes, um, going forward, uh, with, um, the state of, of what's happening. So really, um, it's all about right now, and my, all of my remarks are related, uh, to COVID. But there's still a lot of very good things going on in the city. Uh, we will continue to do the things to stay vigil- vigilant and, uh, fighting this. But, you know, we also have a responsibility to all of our citizens to make sure that, um, that we continue, uh, to figure out ways for them to stay at work and do the things that have got to be done in order to keep our society moving and for keep people, uh, employed. Thank you.
I have a question of the mayor, if I may, on, on his topic.
Ms. Rich?
Thank you. Uh, Mayor, can you elaborate on what your, what that alcohol policy was? It, it wasn't really clear, something about the city. Um, I, I really didn't understand the language of it, and I know you had a lot of conversations with the groups, so something might have been missing. And I don't want to represent it incorrectly.
So in the spirit of trying to, uh, work with the Mardi Gras organizations, many who are struggling, I mean, struggling mightily, uh, to, to continue on. You know, one of the things that we found out was that, uh, if you have to cancel a ball, you know, there was, uh, going to be a huge expense associated, and depending on when you canceled it, there would be a huge expense associated with the Civic Center or the Convention Center having purchased the alcohol. Uh, knowing that it would eventually be used, uh, we made the decision that we would step in and cover that cost for the ensuing twelve months until Mardi Gras next year, should a organization have to cancel at the last minute because of COVID. Uh, we felt like that was really a small risk, uh, for the city to take. But we were trying to send the message that we were, uh, encouraging them to continue with their plans.
A- and do you have an idea or an estimate of what that cost would be to, um, step up and, and absorb and then get it back the following year?
Uh, no, ma'am, I do not. But again, I felt like that that was, uh, going to be a, a small risk, uh, based on what we felt like was gonna happen with COVID as it continued to increase. And that the number of, uh, by, excuse me, the number of, uh, Mardi Gras organizations that were probably gonna cancel their balls.
Okay. Uh, I mean, I, I understood the idea that we would not hold them responsible. What was it a week before on our facilities, but I didn't really understand the alcohol aspect of it. Um, and also the idea that, um, there would, could be nine on a float, which sets the parameters. Was there any thought about how you would handle crowd control for distancing? Was that, i- is that something police are gonna have to do or, or did you not get that far?
We, um, great comment at the very end. We had not gotten that far. Uh, we do know that, uh, in the parade routes, there are certain pinch points where you have huge gatherings of crowds. It's typically where the parade, uh, doubles back. And, you know, and I'll give you an example, being the corner of Washington and Government Boulevard on a lot of the polite parades. There are a lot of people that gather there because they know they will see the parade twice. So there have been, there's been thought given to, how do you not have the parade double back? So that it goes, you know, in a circuitous route, but that you don't have a huge gathering in any one spot. Um, obviously, we had not gotten that far because, uh, because we had not gotten that far at this point.
No, I, I understand. And, and it's keeping the paraders safe by having that nine feet. But I, I just didn't, couldn't fathom how you would do a crowd if we were encouraging them to come downtown, which we always do at Mardi Gras. So I, I'm glad it's a work in progress and this might all be moved depending on what our resources ha- are in dealing with COVID as Mardi Gras gets closer.
Right.
Thank you.
Yep.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
I was, I was gonna, um, uh, good morning, good morning, Mr. Mayor.
Good morning.
I wanted to say that, uh, I'm getting a little, um, disturbed over tr- over the trash issue, um, uh, especially on, uh, Springfield Avenue, which is, uh, US ninety-eight, on, uh, St. Stephen Road, which is US forty-five. These are major highways in my district. But it's all over the district where people are continuing to bring trash out like the hurricane happened last week. So I, do, are, are you all going to give a last date of the? So I, do, are, are you all going to give a last date of the words, have all your trash out by and have a certain time? If not, I think they're going to be dragging that stuff out and for the next six months. I think, I think once you do a thorough pass and say you are, you've gone over this whole city, I think they need a date, a date certain. And I think that date certain ought to be posted on the housetop everywhere where everybody ought to know and then start finding people if they put it back on. I think we got to put an end to it.
You, you and I concur 100%. They will continue to drag it out. Wanting to give them a little bit of benefit of the doubt, what we've decided is that we'll go through this Friday. By this Friday, we'd know that we will have been everywhere, at least down every single street. And so we'll do an assessment Friday. We've been saying in the nightly newsletter that we would, after Thanksgiving is when we're going to get back on our schedule. It has come up about starting to find people, but again, wanting to try to get as much debris up as we can without finding people. But after Thanksgiving, probably the first week in December, we will go back to very stringent rules about you don't put the trash out, you know, until the day before it's to be picked up. We will be back on our schedule by then.
Got you. Okay.
Thank, thank you, Mr. Vice President?
Yeah, Ms. Mayor, good morning, Ms. Mayor. I'm still receiving calls and not saying that the citizens are telling the truth or they, or they not, but they like these little small streets that could be possible missed, especially I got some off of DIP. Is it, I know you said this Friday y'all gonna go through or y'all gonna just check to make sure, like go through a map to make sure that that street actually got touched or not?
Yes, good question. Colonel DeLapp has been working with Thompson Engineering and with DRC to make sure that, you know, we have covered every single street. There, we have found, there was a street down in the deep, DIP area that John Peavy found that had been missed, but it's very few councilor that have been missed. But yes, we should have a, working with GIS and working with Thompson and all to have shown, you know, every single street, like blocking it out that we know that we've gone down it. So, you know, my hope is that we haven't missed anybody, but if we have, we'll admit it and we'll pick up the trash.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, well, thank you, Ms. Stimson. We appreciate your continued leadership and, and all of your commentary you provided. Thank you. Ma'am City Clerk?
Adoption of the agenda. No move.
Second.
Mr. President, I'd like to move the adoption of the agenda and that all items listed as essential COVID 19 items be so designated.
I second that too.
Been properly moved and seconded in discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Appeals, we have request for way with the noise ordinance on November 20th at Bragg, Mitchell Mansion.
Don't move.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded in discussion. If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Presentation of petitions and other communications to the council. We have Reggie Hill.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk, Mr. President, members of the council, Ms. Stimson, sentences and stakeholders of Mobile. Good morning, Reggie Hill, 1007 Center Street. Just as a note regarding the council rules, to my understanding, speakers who want to address agenda items, they're supposed to submit those at 12 on the Monday preceding the Tuesday meeting, but I know the rules, our president stated that it could be 30 minutes before, so that might want to be amended. I'm not sure, I thought there was an ordinance approved making that 12 on Monday. But before I begin my, my statements today on what I've submitted to the City Clerk's office, I do want to congratulate our President and Vice President for being able to conduct city business on this monumental day. They recognize internationally as the Greatest Founders Day for a fraternal organization in the National Panhellenic Council, also known as the Divine Nine. So I know that y'all are celebrating this special day with me. So I want to go to agenda item 08, that's 824. And efforts to clear the air, I just want to say that Success for the Future had an extremely positive and productive meeting with the Chief of Police just a couple of weeks ago and we are grateful for the time that he made for us. I will be sharing those findings with both the council and administration. So my inquiries on this agenda items 08, that's 824. I just simply want to know the council's understanding of what this agenda item is. If we're going to relinquish this responsibility with ammunition, we must ensure that we, we have a plan in place to make the best practices. We haven't necessarily seen that. And I've discussed whether we've given away resources that we can prevent, have to use different ammunition. But I, I just want to know, you know, is this something that's regularly occurring with the council and how often that is approved? As far as regards to, and that might be a question for the City Council Attorney or the Public Safety Director. And if anyone would want to respond to that, I'll leave opportunity for that before I move on to the next items. Okay.
Mr. Harlidge, does you have any commentary in response to Mr. Hill's inquiry?
It's time is rolling.
Could you repeat the question, please?
Yes, sir. The, the question that I submitted, I wanted to know about the regular occurrence of the ammunition purchase. Is this something that the council approves? And what is the annual basis for council approval?
What is the annual basis for council approval?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir, because I'm sure this is a reoccurring purchase within the Mobile Police Department, correct?
The council, the administration puts purchase orders on the agenda. The council votes on them. You know, that's all I, I really know about it.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
Let me just say that Mr. Hill is going to run out of time going down this road. If you go it on and go over all of what you want to say and, and give us your question, we're going to give them to the administration. We don't have no answers for all what the administration will have to answer for except for what they're going to do with the, with this ammo. I don't know whether the other ones got stale on them. If they said they need it, we're not going to tell them you don't need it. So we're going to approve it. But if you want to know the specifics of why they're ordering it, you got to give us these questions, we'll give you the answer. If not, you're going, you're going to be waiting on your answer and you're going to run out of time.
Well, I appreciate that, Council Richardson. I'm hoping that if it got to the part where the time had elapsed, that a council member would grant me an additional minute. I'm just saying that I believe that if this is going to be purchased, that the council should have something in place to meet the police. And we're giving them all this responsibility. We need to have best practices as well to ensure that public safety is what the ammo actually is for this. But I'll move on to the next agenda items and I'll just collectively combine them 08-826 and 08-841 through 844. Look, I've already commended the council and administration for being able to secure these $70 million in the reserves. So it's not that we don't have the resources to purchase these equipment items and these agenda items that appear week after week, but when we're discussing how we still haven't collected all of the trash and debris across the city, I just believe that we should be placing more priorities in other places as well as we know there are communities who are dealing with not having street lights at night and that also impacts public safety. So I would like to see us purchasing more equipment that will actually alleviate the problems that we have on a priority list rather than these amenities that I believe could wait for a near future date. Not saying that they won't be approved or they won't be taken care of within the near future date. So I just hope that we're considering that as we move forward. I thank everyone that responded to my question and I thank you for yielding the floor.
Thank you, Mr. Hill.
Mr. President?
Mr. Richardson?
Let me just say, I'm not asking for you in the comment from Mr. Hill, that I have long asked the mayor to purchase a bucket truck so they can get up there and change these lights out. We can't make him order a truck. I don't care if he got $300 million in reserve, we can't make him order a bucket truck.
Ma'am City Clerk?
Essential COVID 19 items held over. 48615, declare destruction at 2410 Hart Avenue of public nuisance and order it demolished.
Move to table.
Been properly moved and seconded in discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
40, 47702, assent to the vacation of a five foot strip of land adjacent to Lot B Walker's addition to Braywood. That was good, okay. 01, oh, we need to take that one separately.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded in discussion?
Mr. Preston, I move that we substitute this item for the one that, that Mr. Harlidge referenced earlier. Is that, is that the motion, Chris?
Yes, substitute the original resolution for the, the new one that we put on there.
Is there a second?
Second.
Probably, probably moved in second, ended discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? So now we'll go back to the original item as properly amended. There's been a motion and a second, ended discussion?
Just, just one comment and that, that the change of new document is that simply an addition of a budding property owner's signature and name on the, on the new document.
Any further discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
01821, authorize agreement with Public Park and Recreation Board of the City of Mobile for the renovation of the Lad People Stadium locker room. 01822, authorize agreement with Mobile Museum Board to manage, operate and promote the facility. 08824, approve item base bid for ammunition from Precision Delta Corp. 08826, approve purchase order to Terra View for Range Pro X8 UAV. 08827, approve purchase order to Tolder for garbage carts, lids, hinges and fasteners. 21828, authorize contract with McElhenney Construction for Drainage Group C. 21829, authorize contract with Guardian Pest Control for pest control services to various city facilities. 60835, approve settlement and release of claims. Are we okay with that?
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved and seconded in discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Essential COVID 19 items being introduced for the first time, 08841 through 37850.
Mr. Preston, I move for immediate consideration of items 37847, 58848 and 6849. The remainder to hold over one week pursuant to council rules.
Second.
Probably moved in second, ended discussion? Not all in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
37847, recommend approval to the ABC Board for issuance of a retail beer table wine or premises only license for BD Food Mart on Azelia Road. 58848, authorized removal of weeds group 1608. 60849, determine an appropriation to Smith Memorial AME Church serves a public purpose and approve payment.
So moved.
Second.
Been properly moved in second, ended discussion? If not, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I respect.
Announcement.
Mr. Richardson?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I received this announcement yesterday from Dr. Walken Holloway. You know, he's a train man. So he, he'd like, he asked me if I would make this announcement for him. That is that November has been recognized as, as the model train month all over the nation. And that he has set up his 18 by 24 HO scale of his model train in the Explorium Science Museum. It is on display and you can see it at the STEM Wonderland section of the museum, the STEM Wonderland section of the museum. It will be on display until January the 15th, 2021. So all those interested in trains, please go, come, come down to, it's up, it is up and running now. And it's, it's at the, the Science Museum. And he told me that at the end of every freight train, at the caboose of every freight train, it's a flashing red light. And he said the name of the light is rear end, is flashing rear end device. That's the name of the light, the flashing rear end device. The acronym for flashing rear end device is FRED. So I want you to know that at the end of the caboose of every train, you will see FRED flashing. Just wanted to get that beneath. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Richardson. Ms. Rich?
Thank you. I wanted to bring to the administration's knowledge, Sugar Creek Place still has debris. I think some of it was picked up. There was one citizen who contacted me, I think two, two weeks ago, maybe a week ago. I heard from another person and the city has been in and got the one that my office had written up, but there's still debris there and apparently they need a smaller truck. And this is also a cul-de-sac and, and just wanted to bring it their attention. I'll probably write it up again and also send it to 311, talk to the resident. I'd like to thank the mayor for his, his concurrent, well, with his agreement that he'll write or let his readers know about the vote that took place on the Nevis Road. It was not a unanimous vote. Two were opposed and I, I just think that's good knowledge for citizens to have and not an understanding that the council passed, yes, the council passed, but without putting out that there was objection. It, it is something that I think the readers should hear because of the widespread nature of the mayor's nightly emails. So I appreciate his willingness to do that and look forward to it. Thanks a lot.
No problem, Ms. Rich. Mr. John Charles Williams?
No, thank you, sir.
Let's see, everybody else has got, Mr. Vice President?
Uh, thank you, Mr. President. I would like to thank several people, Ms. Stimson, also Superintendent Thregill, Ms. Smith, which is over the Parks and Rec and the Administration. We had an opportunity to meet on last Thursday at Tremere Park, which is located off the South DIPN. And Tremere Park has a very great opportunity to become like a world-class sports complex for our youth between, you know, football, soccer, softball and baseball. And we're getting some great plans together and I do appreciate each and every one that had came out last Thursday to overview, to look, to look in the overview on Tremere Park, but we're going to make that park one of the best parks in Mobile, Alabama. And again, I'd like to thank each and every one for coming out on last Thursday to, to invest their interest into Tremere Park. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Well, I want to, Ms. Gregory? Ms. Gina Gregory? You might be on mute, Ms. Gregory. Well, I.
Nope, she's on.
Okay, well, okay. I had gotten a message that she might have been with us through her phone. I just want to advise all of our citizens in District 2 to continue to be mindful and vigilant relative to our masks. As I travel across the district, I see so many who have become lax. So many who have, who have almost again fallen into this COVID fatigue. So many who have, who have almost again fallen into this COVID fatigue. And, uh, I have a member of my church whose sister is suffering with this disease now in the ICU. This is serious. This isn't a hoax. This isn't political. This is very serious. And wearing a mask doesn't disrespect you. It respects me. It protects me. And I'm asking that all citizens, particularly, you know, we've got those who, who get so mad about downtown and the possibility of, of this or that impacting downtown. Well, if we want to keep that area vibrant and alive and, and keep it, uh, hot and, and, and keep it open, then we need to abide by as close as we can the advice that we're getting from our health professionals. Wear your mask. Let's be socially distant. Wash your hands, uh, cover your mouth when you cough. That's just good manners even before COVID came in. There were some of us that weren't doing that. And you weren't washing your hands before COVID. So this is a good time to try to reinforce habits that we should have already had. And so, uh, especially downtown, let's wear those masks. Let's be vigilant. Uh, we're getting closer as we heard from Dr. Iceole and Dr. Soparo. And, uh, it, it, working together, we can, we can survive this. It's, it's Ms. Gregory. I want to give a one more, Ms. Gregory, are you online with us?
She had been for a very long time, uh, Mr. President. I don't know where she dropped off, but you know she's going to Burnham.
Right. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Well, that, that concludes my announcement. Citizens, if I can be of some help, I'll manage.
Can, can you hear me, Mr. President?
Hey. There we go. Ms. Gregory, all right.
Okay, my battery died, so I apologize, but I would have been listening in.
For you, Ms. Gregory. I was holding out hope for you.
Okay, I've been, been listening in, uh, on the phone. So, uh, thank you for the opportunity to, uh, share some announcements.
Yes, ma'am.
Uh, we vote, we voted for the discretionary funding request for Smith Memorial AME Church. That is going for their team victory event, which will be this Saturday. It is a food giveaway, specifically turkeys, uh, for people in the community. We are definitely focusing on seniors, but it will be a first come, first served, uh, as well. So that will be Saturday at Smith Memorial AME Church, and that is on Felhorn Drive over in Hillsdale. Also, we have set a committee meeting for the Administrative Services Committee to, uh, start looking again at short-term rentals. And that meeting will be December 2nd. This will be just the first of several that I'm sure we'll have. So I'll be in touch with everybody to give you some more details on how we plan to handle this. But thank you, everybody, for agreeing on December 2nd. And, uh, we'll start looking. Chris has a, another proposed, uh, uh, ordinance that he'll send out. But it's, it's a starting point. That, that's all it is. So we'll be discussing that in greater detail. And, uh, that's, uh, that's it from District 7, Mr. President. Thank you so much.
Hey, it's, it's no problem. Thank you. And you reminded me, uh, when you brought up those food drives, that I will be sponsoring three in, uh, between now and Christmas. Uh, one in conjunction with, uh, the Yorktown Baptist Church in Plateau. One in conjunction with the Tru Line Baptist Church on Avenue. And then continuing in partnership with the Corinthian Baptist Church in Mayville. Uh, we know that their family is being impacted by this pandemic. We certainly want to do what we can to give some assistance. Uh, and appreciate all that feed in the Gulf Coast and all of these local pastors and churches who rolling up their sleeves and being a part of the community, uh, are doing to help to abate that problem during this very, uh, serious but joyful time of the year. Uh, any other announcements?
I have, I just have a question to ask, uh, Councilwoman Gregory. I thought we put down December 1st, which would be a Tuesday. Is that correct still, or did you want to go with the Wednesday, the 2nd?
She's, um, she's disconnected.
Okay. Um, I have it on my calendar as the Tuesday, the 1st. And I think that was the correspondence, but we'll get that straight. And speaking of dates, I don't know if we need to think about this now, but we might want to think about the holiday season coming up since public hearings or, or, um, you know, items that come on our agenda at the clerk's office. And if we can get a consensus perhaps on, uh, we usually take some time off during, um, Christmas and New Year. So just thought kind of put that out there for people to think about it.
Right, the 22nd is the week of, um, Christmas and we are closed, you know.
The city is, right?
Um, I mean, you know, the, yeah, the, um, Christmas Eve and Christmas Day. And, uh, so we'll have limited staff in our office with vacation also.
Mm-hmm. So that would, so that you're saying the 22nd, which is a council meeting day, would be a normal council meeting day. The city is closed? That's a holiday?
No, 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 no. I'm saying that we're, we're closed that Thursday and Friday, the 24th and the 25th.
25th, right.
That would. And we'll have, yeah, so we would, um, be appreciative to not have a meeting that week.
Okay.
It's fine with me.
For the, the 22nd, and you're okay with the 29th, is what you're saying?
Yeah, we back on that.
Right.
We're going, we're taking, we're taking off the 22nd. That's it for Christmas.
Okay, well, sometimes we take it before and sometimes it depends. So, okay.
I'm with you, Beth. I agree.
I mean, I would, I would take the two.
Mr. Richardson, if, if we're gonna be off on the 22nd, uh, Ma'am City Clerk, what date is the meeting before that?
29th. So, um, we may be, um, better to, um, to take the 29th off and just, uh, have a meeting on the 22nd.
There we go, Beth.
Okay, sounds good. So, Mr. Richardson, uh, will you be in charge of getting the, uh, Christmas entertainment as usual?
Yes.
You know who we're requesting.
Make sure they bring their audio.
Now we had.
Don't you forget, you forgot last year.
Let's zoom in. Let's repeat this. The 29th is the one we'll take off?
The 29th is the one we'll take off and we'll be on the 22nd.
Uh-huh, okay.
Next year.
Some start celebrating the beginning of the new year a little early. So, you know, that would be a good, good time, Ma'am City Clerk. That sounds good.
Motion to adjourn.
Second.
Is, that's been a proper motion and second is in the discussion? If not, all in favor? Aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Meeting is adjourned.